Perfect. Well, good morning, everybody. It's so nice to see everyone. Thanks for coming out in the cold. I think we're getting used to the chilly weather. I think actually today it warmed up a little bit. So thank you all for joining us this morning. I will call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. sharp, and I will ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem.
(Singing)
For council that would adopt the agenda February 12, 2025, regular meeting of council minutes. Councilor Kamana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning? No, then we'll leave it as is. Thank you, Tom. I looked at it, but I skipped right over it. Any corrections or amendments to the January 29, 2025 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the January 29, 2025 regular council meeting minutes as presented? Councilor Clark, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. This morning, we do have one proclamation. And as you can see, there was only one of us. Oh, Kathy, two of us that got the memo to wear red today. So thank you for participating in today's proclamation. It is for Wear Red Canada Day. It actually is tomorrow, but we have our council meeting today. So we're doing our proclamation. It is for February 13, 2025. Whereas heart disease is the number one killer of women worldwide and the leading cause of premature death for Canadian women, a fact unknown to many women and their healthcare providers. And whereas the Canadian Women's Heart Health Alliance is an organization of volunteer health professionals and patients working hard to improve women's heart health. And whereas Wear Red Canada Day is celebrated annually to raise awareness for all Canadians, but especially Canadian women, to be mindful, curious, and proactive in the management of their heart health and wellness. And whereas we want to see better prevention, diagnosis, and care, and fewer women dying prematurely from heart disease. Therefore, I, Mayor Nancy Dawes, on behalf of council for the town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim February 13, 2025, Wear Red Canada Day in the town of Drayton Valley. So thank you very much to those that wore red. Tomorrow, we'll get it right and we'll wear red. Next up on the agenda, we have a... Before we jump into our delegation, we have a special guest this morning. Trish, if you'd like to come down, please. I believe that you would like to speak to us or present us with something this morning, is my understanding.
(Singing)
On behalf of... Drayton Valley?
Drayton Valley, Indigenous Learning. So I'd like to thank them for doing their part in the SOS campaign this year.
Oh, that's right. So this is for the socks or sweaters campaign that we did just before Christmas.
Okay. And we managed to get a dozen and a half coats or so, which have already been given out. There are a few left. But 175 hoodies, 70 women's sweaters, 815 pairs of socks, and various other things that we donated to Warming Hearts and stuff. And we've been donating all around. We do have one on Friday from 2:00 to 4:30, and it's for the needy to come and pick up some items and get some warm socks and stuff. Still cold out.
Well, thank you very much. That was so nice of you. We'd love to get a picture with you, and we really appreciate you coming and delivering us this certificate. I know it was a fun way to get involved, and we created a little video. And I know that we challenged... I think it was the Thunder that we had challenged, and we'd been thundered by... Or challenged by your organization. So we appreciate it. We hope you challenge us again in the future. And then again, pickup for individuals in our community is 2:00 to 4:30 at The Rotary House. Okay, at The Rotary House, February 14 on Friday. Well, thank you so much. We'd love to get a little picture with you, Trish.
Challenge was Intercom. And if you can go online and look at their video, it was really good. And they were all good. But that was the one that won.
Oh, wow. Wow, we'll have to step it up next year. Well, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. (Singing) Oh, that's right. So this is for the socks or sweaters campaign that we did just before Christmas.
Okay. And we managed to get a dozen and a half coats or so, which have already been given out. There are a few left. But 175 hoodies, 70 women's sweaters, 815 pairs of socks, and various other things that we donated to Warming Hearts and stuff. And we've been donating all around. We do have one on Friday from 2:00 to 4:30, and it's for the needy to come and pick up some items and get some warm socks and stuff. Still cold out.
Well, thank you very much. That was so nice of you. We'd love to get a picture with you, and we really appreciate you coming and delivering us this certificate. I know it was a fun way to get involved, and we created a little video. And I know that we challenged... I think it was the Thunder that we had challenged, and we'd been thundered by... Or challenged by your organization. So we appreciate it. We hope you challenge us again in the future. And then again, pickup for individuals in our community is 2:00 to 4:30 at The Rotary House. Okay, at The Rotary House, February 14 on Friday. Well, thank you so much. We'd love to get a little picture with you, Trish.
Challenge was Intercom. And if you can go online and look at their video, it was really good. And they were all good. But that was the one that won.
Oh, wow. Wow, we'll have to step it up next year. Well, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. (Singing) That's a lot of socks. Thank you so much.
Trish, how long were you part of the bakery?
A year.
A year.
Familiar. As great. For all your donors and years of being... Well, that's always so nice. And it has been very chilly out. So hopefully, everyone will make their way to The Rotary House on Friday and pick up some socks and sweaters and coats if they're in need. So thank you again, Trish, for that. We'll move into our delegations. First up is 7.1 Roots of Resilience Charter School. This morning, we have Ms. Charlene and Wendy with us. So good morning. Thank you so much for coming. If you want to head on to the podium.
Good morning, and thank you for having us. So I'm here to advocate on behalf of Indigenous students in Drayton Valley. We don't have anything specific in Drayton Valley for Indigenous children. The funding that goes to the division, the majority of it goes to Rocky Mountain House. And so our Indigenous kids here are kind of left out. They don't get the same cultural teachings or programming that they do in the south part of the division. So we want to rectify that. We want to focus on the kids that are here in our area, and not just the Indigenous kids, but those kids whose parents would like them to have the same type of teachings, which is where we teach to the child rather than to just the curriculum. So we need something that's centered in Drayton Valley, and that's what I'm hoping we can get started today. So for the technical stuff, I will let my partner, Charlene, speak.
Thank you, Wendy. Good morning. My name is Charlene Bearhead. Originally Charlene Wiseman, that grew up here and graduated from here so long ago that you wouldn't even remember it. I've got... I taught in the one-room schoolhouse. No, I'm not that old. So I've got some speaking points to keep this tight, because I know there's lots of business. But we are very excited to be here to let the community know and speak to council about our proposed charter school and to make sure that people are really clear about what that means. So as Wendy indicated, Roots of Resilience Charter School is Indigenous-focused charter school. Talk a little bit about what that means. You've got the information in your package. But basically, charter schools, to be very clear, are public schools. So when people say, "I don't want to take away from public education," charter schools are public education. Alberta is the only province or territory in the country that has provision for charter schools. Charter schools are public schools, publicly funded schools, meaning that we have the same requirements for curriculum. It's just delivered in a different way. It means that we have the same funding. There's no cost to parents. It is not a private school. There's no cost to parents to attend the school. It means that we have transportation and the same funding for infrastructure. But Alberta has, for many years now, about 25 years, I think, there's been provisions for charter schools, looking for schools that will be models. And there's a requirement to communicate the success of the school so that they can be models for how education can be delivered in a unique way that will improve student learning and student success. So we are proposing, as Wendy indicated, an Indigenous-focused charter school. And obviously, this will resonate probably stronger for Indigenous families than maybe non-Indigenous families. Everyone's Indigenous to somewhere. The reason that we have Roots of Resilience is because it really is about giving our children the opportunity to connect not only to their own culture and their own heritage, to find themselves in their education, for us to find their path and help support them in that in small class sizes. We are not looking to take over the world. We are looking to fill a void where children who are not necessarily flourishing and thriving in the options that are available to them, public or private, that's available to date, we're looking to fill that void for them. My background is education. As I said, I'm old. I haven't taught in the school system for a long time. Interestingly, I saw the research the other day as we were doing our work for the Ministry of Education. And there was only ever one other Indigenous charter school that ever existed in this province, and that was Mother Earth Children's Charter School. And I am the person who started that 23 years ago. And it operated for 21 years. I operated it for five years and then stepped back and turned it over to the community. And I was very happy to see that they operated for 21 years. So we would be, we will be, the second Indigenous charter school in the province and a model for what Indigenous education could look like, not only in the province, but across the country. So, as I said, a unique approach. For people who ask, "What does that mean in Indigenous approach to education?" And basically, it's around holistic learning. It's that we don't have a bunch of little brains sitting in a seat, and we're trying to cram curriculum into it. It's about who are these young people? What are their passions? What are the things they love? We can't put potential into someone, but we can draw it out. And how do we do that? And give students a place where they feel safe, where they see themselves reflected, and that they can focus on learning rather than maybe some of the anxiety or fear or bullying that sometimes they experience? We see a heavy emphasis on land-based learning. Nature is a good thing. I don't know if people have seen this research lately, but doctors are actually starting to prescribe time in nature for healing, especially around mental health anxiety issues. And people can't learn if they don't feel safe, if they don't feel comfortable, if their other needs aren't met. So sometimes, you know, people are a little bit skeptical and will say, "Well, if you're not focusing on the curriculum..." There are children. I'm old. I've got grandchildren coming in now. I started the first charter school, Mother Earth, because my children were school age at that time. And for the same reason that we're starting this school now with another group of really committed people, because charter school boards are volunteer boards, by the way. If you're on a charter school board, you have to be volunteer. There is no compensation. And we are very happy to be serving in that capacity. But if it's not enough, if I don't feel like... And I'm not saying it's not good enough. But if I don't feel like it's good enough for my own grandchildren, I feel like I might as well put in the effort. And we might as well put in the effort and make that offer for other people's children and grandchildren as well, which is why we're here. So we will have the Alberta Programme of Studies that people refer to as curriculum that we will be implementing in a very hands-on, small-group way. We are in discussions with a local childcare provider. Our goal is to have childcare onsite for the younger siblings of the students as well as staff. That family, community context for the students and children and families is really important to us. Additionally, we will be offering Indigenous language learning. One of our team members is... Has her master's in learning second language. It's actually called Second Language Acquisition in a Natural Environment. So at this point, with the families that we have signed up, we will be offering Krimachif and Nakota. But we will determine what that looks like based on the families. The school will be built around the people and the children who come. It's not going to be... We've got the overall structure, but it won't be, "This is what we have, and if you fit in that little box, then you're welcome." We are welcoming any students whose parents feel like this would be beneficial to them. Creator's been looking after us, or whoever you might believe in. We were able to secure a secretary treasurer with no money, who is a retired Government of Alberta Finance Officer for Alberta Education. And we are showing that with 15 children in a class, with a teacher and an EA, we are financially feasible, which we have to prove to the minister. Everything is in. We're still taking names of students. Of course, the more interest that we show, the higher probability. We are partnering with the University of Alberta Faculty of Education. They, as you can see in your packages, are very excited. And their Aboriginal Teacher Education Program is very, very excited because they feel like this will finally be a place that will be a really great placement for their students. So we're looking forward to even higher staff-student ratios because we will have many student teachers in our school. I have to have speaking points because I get too excited, and you'll be here all day. And we have 10 minutes. Again, I think that those are the high points. People have the package. Happy to take any questions. But to the why are we here? We're here, I mean, first and foremost, as a courtesy. This is the town of Drayton Valley. You're the people responsible for the town of Drayton Valley. And so as a professional courtesy, we wanted to make sure that you know that this is what we're applying for. We are really hoping that you are as excited as we are to have this model of education in our town and that we will... We would love to and hope to secure a letter of support from the town of Drayton Valley for our application, which we will be submitting next week. It's been a very exciting few weeks for us because on the website, it still says you can apply for a charter school at any time of the year. And about 14 days ago, the minister put out a letter that said, "Actually, March 1st is your deadline." So we have been peddling very quickly. All the independent research. You have to prove that this is a model that will improve student learning. And we've got the independent research as well in from the university, which we are really grateful for because then we can focus on the children as the Faculty of Education focuses on the research that shows that this is viable. And just to clarify, facility, people ask about facility. To be very clear, we will be seeking to lease the available space. And if this doesn't work, we'll find something else. But we feel like the Clean Energy Technology Centre is a beautiful facility in this town that would be ideal for the TPs and TANs and outdoor education that we would also be doing. And the facility is fantastic. So we will be applying to lease the available space, not pushing anyone out, at the CETC at the published rates. And that's actually the rates that we are looking at in our financial projections. So like anyone else in town that would choose to lease those classroom spaces at the published rate. The only difference is we'd be looking to be a long-term tenant for five years. Because for charter schools, your first charter approval is for five years. And after that, proving success, the minister will grant a 15-year charter if you prove success. Am I under my time?
Oh, you are perfect. Thank you very much for that. I'll open it up for questions. Councilor Kamana?
Thank you. Good morning. And it's very exciting to see a new initiative like this. So I'm sorry for my lack of knowledge. I'm just asking to get more information. First of all, you know, when you go through a charter school like this, how does it fit with the higher education system in Alberta? And does it seamlessly flow towards a college degree or anything like that?
So it's a K to 12. And thank you for asking that because I realized that's a piece that I missed. We're applying for kindergarten to grade 12, which is what we're working with the Ministry of Education for, which, by the way, are their team. We don't know what the minister will say, but their team's very excited because this will be unique. So it's like any other... You go to public school. It's a different approach to that. Obviously, the students get a little more attention. But absolutely, we look... For us, it's about focusing on what are the gifts? How do that student and their families define success? What is that child's pathway? Whether that's to the trades, whether that's to post-secondary, whether that's a university or college? And, you know, as we said, we're partnering with the University of Alberta to start with, but with dual credit opportunities. There's opportunities in this town. This is a really great town for RAP. This is a really great place to do... So it's great to have shop or welding or whatever that is in a school facility. I will tell you that I always said I'd rather jump off a bridge than homeschool my own children. Like, I'm a teacher. And, you know, that never say never. I homeschooled my own children for the last five years, I guess. I have a lot of kids, six kids. So I had a file on each child because of just that. And I knew exactly what they needed. And four out of five of my kids graduated before they were 18, and they went to RAP. And, you know, one of my sons was a red seal during when Carpenter, when he was 19. And different kids have different pathways. But absolutely, it's a public school, same requirements, and that's our goal for our kids. And when I say our kids, I mean our collective children in this community.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first wanted to comment. I was the CEO at Parkland County and had the great pleasure of visiting Mother Earth School with Mayor Rod Chagis. And one of my friends, who I grew up in Loughbush, Mr. James Cardinal, was involved in school at that particular time. And I believe that you and I had met then many, many years ago. But in any event, a couple of questions. In your submission, you talk about the charter goals and the four guiding goals of the school. Could you just speak to that briefly, please?
Absolutely. I actually had that little tab and then was a little bit worried about taking too much time. I saw the 10 minutes. Yeah, absolutely. So the charter goals, as we said, you know, I mean, our vision is to make sure that... Or do everything we can to ensure that children reach their potential in a learning environment that is holistic, that we instill confidence, respect, and a sense of identity. But when you talk about the goals, they very much are equally balanced and spiritual, whatever that means to you. Some people call that emotional, spiritual grounding. Some people call that mental health. There's... And mental wellbeing in this particular case is really about that academic, intellectual nurturing, physical, social. So it's really about supporting the whole individual. Because if we can do that, students will be in the best place possible to be able to learn and reach their own potential. And as you see with the outcomes we have, our outcomes are that students will thrive, that students will achieve their highest potential. And you see all the outcomes that are listed there, that students feel safe to be themselves. And that's a big issue with kids in schools, period. And that they will attend school regularly. Student retention is an issue. And we know that success in education, whatever that might be, is... It's always interesting to see that back and forth. Education is as a health determinant and health as an education determinant. And so if we can really, in a really grounded, community-safe way, provide our children with those... That sort of environment and those supports, they will reach their highest potential in a way that is meaningful to them. So rather than trying to push kids into the curriculum, we're looking at how do we... And I'll just say, my humble opinion is that any good educators, and there are lots, see how they make the curriculum fit, the program that the student needs.
Madam Mayor, just two more questions. And I appreciate the answer very much. My mother was an educator, schoolteacher. You talk about homeschooling. I remember too well.
Yeah, so do my poor kids.
Yeah. So just wanted to reference the letter from Dr. Jennifer Tupper, the dean of the Faculty of Education at the University of Alberta, which confirms their partnership between the faculty and the Roots of Resilience Charter School. I find the last paragraph particularly poignant in that the faculty is excited about this partnership and looks forward to contributing in additional ways as our collaborative collaboration evolves. We believe that this partnership will not only benefit the students and educators of the Roots of Resilience Charter School, but will also enrich the work of the Faculty of Education as they continue to achieve or to advance Indigenous education and the commitment to truth and reconciliation. Very powerful statement. And so pleased to see the university on board with that. So just a comment. If you want to respond, certainly do so.
Well, I would just say that we're really... You know, we are really humbled and honored that Jennifer, the dean, Evelyn Steinhauer, who's the associate dean, who is also the head of the Aboriginal Teacher Education Program, we're very excited that... I mean, this is... It takes all of us. And so the fact that they are... You see in the letter that they are offering professional learning to all of our, you know, all of our staff, that they will have... I'm especially excited about the numbers of student teachers that we will have because that means our kids get even more support and more one-on-one time. And I'm excited that this can be a model. You know, I am a big believer in doing the best you can within what already exists. But sometimes, what already exists isn't ready for that, in which case I have to remove myself. And I'm getting old. I don't have much time left. In which case, I have to remove myself, and I'm getting old. I don't have much time left. I think we have, we all have a limited time on this earth, and we need to do the best we can for our children. And so the fact that the university is also really looking as, that this is a model that maybe will give other education systems confidence to do a little better.
Madam Mayor, just two additional things. In your comments, you mentioned a name that struck a nerve with myself of a very favorable memory, and that was the name Steinhauer. I was fortunate to grow up in Lachibish, Alberta, next door to Mrs. Winifred Yupi, whose maiden name was Winifred Steinhauer, sister of Ralph Steinhauer, our first Indigenous Lieutenant Governor. So very emotional for me. Finally, just want to point out that there is a public information session tomorrow evening. Would you like to speak to that, please?
You want to come with us? Like, I feel like you should, you're awesome. You're hired, buddy. There is. Thank you so much for that. And in fact, we were really pleased to also be approached by a writer with the Free Press. And there will be an article coming out tomorrow to help people.
That's yourself, Amanda?
Amanda.
Thank you.
Nice to see you in real life. We were on the phone. But yes, absolutely. We know that for people, we've had people express a little bit of anxiety about putting, that they really want their kids to come to this school, but they're a little bit nervous about maybe some, they've called it retaliation, but I don't know what we would call it. Anyway, so, and then it's not, you know, it's not, it's not approved yet. It will, the minister has, has, you know, 90 days. But what we're excited about is it gives people the opportunity to save their space. I've also had parents that have reached out to say, I'm not going to lose my child's space, right? We say, no, if your child's on the list, even though it's not registration yet, because you register when the school is approved, but we need the list, and it's a confidential list that only the minister will see of parents who say, I would intend to send my children to this school if it's approved. And of course, as we said, that gives us, you know, more leverage. But yes, tomorrow evening at the Holiday Inn, we're probably, we'll do a presentation when there's the most people there, but we will be there from, it says five, we'll be there from 4:30 till 7:30 because people have things happening with their children. And we will be there to explain everything that we can to people. So thank you for bringing that up.
Wonderful. I think we have a few more questions. I'll go to Councillor McGee.
Good morning. I think these are going to be open house questions because of the timing that we're restricted here. But I'll tell you what I'm thinking right now is, Wendy, you opened up with the issue of funding. And I need to better understand, when you said that Rocky Mountain House gets funding, but we don't get funding, I'd like to understand that better, but, but let me just go to where I'm going. So that's an issue that I thought we should talk about. The second thing is transportation. So my colonial person says we're transporting people from, you know, Ochis, Sunchild, Paulband, the reserves from around us, or not. So that's, that's a thing that I've been thinking about. The other piece is the, I'm curious, as I read through this, I need to better understand what's happening on reserve schools. So you're, you don't need your transportation, you have on-reserve schools, but we're still not finding the same benefits that I think I read in this. So, and then finally, finally, I'm.
You've got a lot to answer.
Finally, I'm thinking about how many, how many people at the University of Alberta are Indigenous and taking an education degree? Because what I read in here will be bringing folks out from the University of Alberta for, for teaching and learning and those kinds of things. But I'm just curious to see how many might be in the Education Department at the University of Alberta. So that's a lot.
Okay.
And as I say, it could be that we certainly have more discussion.
Okay, I can speak to the funding part of it. My kids went through the public school system, and I'm guardian to a niece who's gone through the Catholic school system. So we've always identified as Indigenous, so there's extra funding that's given to the school division for children that are FMNI. And what's happened is all the programming ends up in the Rocky Mountain House area of the division. Very little programming ends up in Drayton Valley. In fact, the only programming that's cultural that my children received through the division was when they graduated, they were given a sash. And that sash was actually supplied by Rupert's Land or the M&amp;A. So really, there wasn't a whole lot that was given to my children as far as programming or Indigenous, anything. And in fact, now my daughter, who was craving that, is at the university taking Native Studies and learning Cree and learning all those things that she probably should have been given some access to while she was here in school and didn't receive. So that's why we're doing this. I did run for school board twice because I wanted to see a change. Unfortunately, I was unsuccessful. And so this is my way of still working towards it. I know my kids are done, they're graduated, but I want all kids to benefit from this. I know my son would have benefited from it. He has Asperger's and other, the whole alphabet soup. He would have done so much better if they had taught to him rather than at him. And then I'll let Charlene speak to the other issues because those are not my area of knowledge.
I'll keep this brief or we'll be here all day. Because it's a, it's a matter of jurisdiction, and in education, funding is a matter of residency and jurisdiction. So students who are resident off reserve, regardless, Métis children are provincial jurisdiction for funding, no matter what. First Nation status, First Nation, non-status children also provincial jurisdiction. Sorry, this is going to get complex, but you asked. First Nation on reserve, it depends on the reserve. We get transportation funding like any other school division, however, and we have had significant interest, which has been shocking to me from as far away as Sunchild and Ochis. That becomes an issue of jurisdiction and funding and tuition agreements. And so a First Nation, so my kids are status, and we lived off reserve. We never lived on reserve. So they, it doesn't matter what your status is. If you're resident off reserve, you are a provincial student. The province funds you. It's by, the funding manual is public, and that's what we do, and that's what we're doing our projections with. Because our goal is to provide education for the children in this region. We've been asked to start one in Rocky Mountain House as well. We have said, let us, we're going to focus at home first. We're going to work in Drayton Valley, and if we choose to set up another campus, we can set up campuses in any location after that if the model works. As I said, I'm not getting any younger, so I'm going to focus on Drayton Valley. However, if students from on-reserve choose to attend our school, and it's not feasible to provide transportation to them because of the distances, because kids can come from anywhere to go to the school. Mother Earth, you know, we had kids coming from the south end of Edmonton to Wab ment to go to our school. So on-reserve, that becomes another issue that just needs to have an education agreement with the nation itself. And then the federal government would give the funding to the nation because First Nation education is now all band-operated. Cold Lake used to be federally still directly funded, but it's not anymore. So the feds give the money to the First Nation, and the First Nation then has an agreement with the school or the school board, which is what would happen with any public school board. Is that helpful?
Reading these questions are sort of, will take time as we start through them, but just to know that I'm interested in, you know, I'll certainly.
So we'll see you tomorrow night, is that what you're saying?
That's right, and you can ask all those other questions.
Yeah, and so that's the way, I think, the best way for us to handle that.
And the ask for today is, you're looking for a letter of support, and you need that letter of support probably by tomorrow? Do we have, who have you spoke to on our team about what would need to be included in that letter of support? Have you spoke to anybody from our administration?
I've spoken with Kundusa, and we've had a couple of meetings and.
Yes, okay. So we feel good about that, what needs to be in the letter? Okay, well, that's wonderful. Okay, that's wonderful. So a letter of support is the request today, as well as your, you've had conversations for location at the CETC, securing classroom space. How many students do you have enrolled or interested currently?
We have, we're very thrilled that the magic number from the government is 55 to be financially viable. We have 60 students, but we have space in the space that's available that we would take up to 90 students, and that would still accommodate, and that's with the vacant classrooms that are available now.
Okay, so that's with the vacant classrooms that we have there. Perfect. And do you have a team of teachers and team ready to go to that supports this?
We can't, we've seen what happens sometimes when people hire people and they don't have the money yet.
Yeah.
And it doesn't work well.
Yeah, but those discussions are all.
So we are not actually hiring people until we actually know that we have the funding. Our goal and our hope is, and we've had outreach from people that are local, we would really love to hire people locally for our school because obviously, you know, if you're here already, you plan on staying.
Yeah.
But no, we, we aren't, we don't have any, we've got our board, which is volunteer. Bless his heart, our secretary treasurer refuses because I've just been paying whatever we've needed out of our pockets, which is why I'll have to work till I die. But yes, we have a secretary treasurer, as I said, who was a retired GOA guy that is helping us on a volunteer basis until we get approval.
Wonderful. And so if everything works out, the hope is in the fall, then you would be able to?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Wonderful. That's wonderful. So yeah, we will take care of the letter of support and assist you with everything you need. Thank you very much for coming today. We're excited that you're bringing this type of opportunity to our community, for the region and for students to learn. So thank you for doing that. And then just one other thing, the program in the school would be for non-Indigenous students as well, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much.
Reconciliation.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. We're excited for you, and we look forward to future discussions and success for you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. Take care. And that is our first allegation this morning. Next up is 7.2. We have the RCMP Drayton Valley Municipal Detachment Calls for Service Report. Staff Sergeant Ryan Hoopner is here, and he has brought in a, another officer with him today, so we're excited.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So I'll first introduce, this is our new sergeant. This is Sergeant Dan Ferry. He started last week, so he is the newest member of Drayton Valley, not new to the RCMP, obviously, or the Drayton Valley detachment. But I'll let Dan introduce himself.
Well, good morning. Welcome, and nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you all. So it's good to be back. I actually started my career here 14 years ago. So this is my first post. Really, really excited to be back in town here. And don't anticipate moving anytime soon, so it's kind of been on the radar to come, come home. Just, yeah, a little bit about background or what I've accomplished since, since being a rookie here in Drayton. Things have significantly changed over a short period, I guess, over a 14-year span. And that's what the RCMP is really, I'll give them a lot of credit. That's where they kind of helps the RCMP model, that ability to move and to get into other units and do different stuff in different areas, and then you can bring that expertise back to that, that small hometown that you wanted, wanted to come back to. So I've, I've worked in Red Deer City as a general duty, as well as on their violent crimes unit. So with Red Deer City, I was able to get a lot of experience with the high crime, high transient homelessness issues, drug issues, downtown issues. Real good exposure to that, as well as being on their violent crimes unit. I got some foundational experience in serious persons crimes investigations. From there, I moved to a provincial general investigation section based out of Edmonton. And I traveled the province dealing with different high-profile crimes or homicides and the like. Spent lots of time investigating serious persons crimes on First Nations that didn't have a lot of support units for them. So a lot of time in the northern half of the province. Really, really good experience. I'm glad to have kind of gathered that experience and expertise over those couple of years there. And then most recently, I moved, I was promoted to corporal and supervised on the watch in Parkland, Spruce Grove, Stony Plain detachment. Very, very busy, very similar to what we're going to be dealing with here, but on a little larger scale, right? So as well as working in Parkland County there, I then, after doing some general duty supervision work, I took charge of their crime reduction unit and focused on high-profile property crime, fugitive apprehension, and any sort of violent, violent crime or violent offender issues that would arise. So we spent a lot of time as well building a model of crime reduction on Paulband First Nations. It was really, really closely with Paulband First Nations. And founded a couple positions that were dedicated just to issues on Paulband First Nation and stuff. So I'm excited to bring that little bit of experience back. Really, really happy to have got the promotion here to take over the vacant sergeant spot that was there. I'm really happy to work with Ryan. That was kind of a, that's a little bit of a deciding factor too, coming, coming here. So we've got a really, really good group. I've met everybody now. It's a lot of junior officers here, and I'm really excited about their, they have a lot of energy, a lot of tenacity. It seems like they, they want to do things. They want to get out. And so it should be, yeah, it should be a good experience for me too, you know, learning experience for me too. So I'm happy to, happy to take some, take some tips and learn some new things from Ryan as well. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and thanks for coming to our community. We appreciate you and welcome you, and congratulations.
Feel free to grill them with any of your questions to them. I'm fully open to that. It's much more exciting than what I have to present, probably, actually. I think I talked last time I was here, we're just going to go do a rundown of what was 2024. It's kind of crazy that it's 2025, but it's February 2025. So, yeah, we can just scroll down to the next page. I'll just highlight a few things. There's lots of charts because there are people in our strategic analysis unit, I don't know if they get paid per chart, but they love charts. If you see through that, through that thing. What I'll point out here is, you can see the very first chart, we've hit a five-year high for our call volume last year. That's still lower than I was here in the 2017, 2018 days when we were higher than that. But our five-year stats don't go back that far, but we have hit a five-year high. We are at 3,800 calls last year, which is 500 more than the year before. Kind of similar to what we were in 2022 and 2020, but we just managed to creep over it. So, I mean, things are picking up here a little bit, that, as you'll see as we move on. Then a chart below, we get lots of interesting stats. Just kind of shows you, October was our highest. The, it, crime kind of goes in trends. Right now, we're in when we usually have our least, which is kind of nice. Cold keeps people inside. So, yeah, the year before July was our highest, doesn't really, doesn't really change that much. The next chart there, the one with all the green, scroll back to that one. That's just, you're curious, you can dig into that. Red means high calls, green means low calls. This is what we use when we build schedules. So our scheduling is often, I'll go to this chart, and we kind of, that's how we decide our resourcing. So just to, you know, when we build schedules, we're not just throwing things at a wall. We actually pull these, look at when we're getting the most of our calls, and you can see that it's actually during the day. It's not at night. And obviously, your four to 6:00 AM are definitely your lowest call. The times that calls get called in, we always say crime doesn't sleep, and it doesn't. There's crime happening then, but people don't find out about it till they usually wake up, which is when we start seeing that eight o'clock, when we start getting it reported. But it's still happening in those hours between four and seven, but it's just not getting called in. If we keep going, that one. So this is an interesting chart, and I like the first one. So it's our calls for service, basically our top workload. And as you can see, our mental health calls is our top workload for Drayton Valley detachment. That is due to our having to transport often to Pinocas. They take in those, that time that that takes. But you can see, it is not, if the, the green chart below, it's kind of seventh, eighth in our number of calls for service, seventh. But it is our highest time driver. So, I mean, anything we can do there, can you advocate for maybe low ability to take them locally?
So what's the difference again between the two?
The two is, the top chart is basically, they take into account the time it takes to deal with that call. So as you can see, we have, we still had 134 mental health calls. That means we're getting called more than once every three days to deal with a mental health call. So, I mean, we're, it's almost every, yeah, every two and a half days, we're getting called to a mental health call. And then the time required to deal with that, we're not transporting everybody clearly, but it is our highest time call that we're dealing with here in Drayton. Secondly, is our mischief. That's just because our mischief count is so high. Once again, we've talked about that's our unsheltered population, often in vestibules or in apartment complexes, getting through the doors, sleeping in the doorways, there are files like that. And then after that, yeah. Our moving traffic, that's just traffic tickets. That, those are normally self-generated, or they're calls about complaints. You have any other questions about that?
Go ahead.
We can pause here, yeah.
Yeah, Ryan, just, I just wanted to kind of highlight, I guess, the, let's see that blue, I guess, both charts. You know, it's looking like there's not a whole lot of violent stuff there, right? I mean, this is all sort of stuff where it's like, you know, there's somebody suspicious, can you go check them out? It's the wellness checks, it's those sorts of things. But, I mean, when there are the, you know, the assaults, those take time, right? There aren't a huge volume of them, but they take time.
Yeah, you can see that assault does show up on our chart for top 10 workload files. It doesn't even show up on our top 10 calls for service. A lot of those assaults, to be honest, are spousal, and spouses take time. So because of how much time they, and the reporting we have to do on spouses, they contribute a lot of workload time to that. So that number is not that high, but the time it takes. they contribute a lot of workload time to that. So that number is not that high, but the time it takes to deal with them are high. But yeah, the number is not. It doesn't even, any sort of violent crime doesn't even hit our top ten.
Sorry, I thought you had another question. Counselor Evans?
So yeah, the, the, the Mental Health Act, calls are taking a lot of your time. And I think we've, you know, that's been the case for, for years.
Yeah.
Pretty much. No easy fix, I guess. I mean, we, you know, kicked around, can somebody else transport them? Or, you know, arrangements be made? That doesn't seem like a viable option. And you talked about it, we would, it would be nice if, if, if we could deal with these issues locally.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, what would, what, what do you think that would look like? Like what kind of a facility would, would that require? And, and just off the top of my head, it seems like it would require a pretty significant facility with, with trained doctors or mental health professionals, et cetera. But I'm curious, do you, do you foresee anything else or any other kind of way to, to manage this? Because I, because I don't see it changing, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I, it would have to become a designated facility and then that would require, obviously, training. I, I mean, I don't want to speak. I don't know what all is required for a designated facility. I imagine they have to have the ability to lock the doors. They have to have security on site. So our, we have Red Deer, we have Pinocca are our options that we go to. I mean, I know everybody's wanting more resources. It'd be nice to see a couple more of those facilities pop up and maybe something closer. But yeah, I think for just this community, I would guess you're not going to get AHS support on that just because it wouldn't be high enough. But if there is even something more, something closer that could serve more communities, that would be nicer.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah. And, and that's kind of what I expected too. Our, our population numbers are just not high enough to, for us to, to do something like that. I, I don't know if there's a regional, you know, we should be looking at something regional or if there's any opportunities there. But yeah, I, I don't see anything changing. I, I see you guys being bus drivers for, for too, too many hours.
Yeah.
You know, it's unfortunate that it's, it's, it's not taking advantage of your, your skills and having you in the community. Instead, you're just out on the highway running these folks back and forth. But yeah, no easy answer.
Okay, thanks.
We are exploring other opportunities when it comes to the healthcare issues in our community. So we are exploring those with Covenant Health. We're doing a study and an assessment. So I know Covenant Health, Gray Nuns does have facilities that support that. So that's could be definitely something on our list of questions. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just wondering, you know, when I go through the top ten, you know, some data about thirty five percent, like, do you have like fifty? File types? So, you know, how many file types do you go through usually? Just curious.
How many file types do we have?
It's probably hundreds of them. Okay. So this is just the top ten and then there's a lot more. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I try to think. Counselor Kamana, when I get our stats, they do bunch some of them together. I would guess for tracking, we're probably in here, it'd probably be about forty. It's what the chart would finish at, I would guess, if I were to count them all up. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. The other one was the municipal bylaw other, you know, there's about a hundred files there. I guess, you know, I'm, I'm sure you're working with our bylaw team here as well. Just curious, you know, do you realize when you get the phone call that it's a bylaw issue and then you pass it along? Or you go there and then realize that it's a bylaw issue? Or how does, how does that communication work out?
It can be a little bit of both. We do pass on some of those. So some of those files, they're still generated though, and they'll still be captured, even if we pass them on to Cody and his team. So even if the call comes to us through our dispatch center, it's still going to be generated, it's still going to be captured on this stat. The other, obviously, bylaws not twenty four seven and we are. So there are times that we will go, some of that could be dog complaints, stuff like that. Some bylaws can wait, some can't, if it's, you know, animals and things like that. But yeah, that stat, some of those will have been passed on to Cody and his team.
Perfect. Well, thank you for that.
You can continue.
All right, we'll continue on. Next stat page is our response time, something I'm pretty proud of, actually. You can see, so it just talks about our average response time. So the province gets to thirty five point six percent of their priority one and two calls within the first five to ten minutes where we get to fifty two percent of them. So that means the members are getting out quick and they're moving quick to these calls for service. And then, I mean, the calls, I think you can see at the top, it takes four point seven five. I don't know why we just go with five, about five minutes to dispatch a priority one. And then it means we're getting there within about five minutes from dispatch time. Obviously, Drayton's Valley is small, so that's a little easier than it would be for a Parkland or a Red Deer. But it just shows the members aren't, they're getting out the door when those calls come in. So, yeah. And, I mean, everything else, we're there, maybe over eighty percent of the time before fifteen minutes hits. So within ten minutes of the members getting dispatched, they're getting to those calls. Some of those, the numbers at the edge, that's probably during our on-call time when we're getting those calls. It obviously takes members a little longer. We have a little brief on-call period. So it takes a little members a little longer to get up and get out and get out there. But by majority, our members are getting out the door quick and they're getting to calls quick. Now is when you get into really all the charts. If you want to have any questions about all those graphs.
Charts are great.
It's unreal. It's just whatever graph you want, it's there.
It's a great job. I look at the one here and I think, whatever we as a community are doing on Sunday and Saturdays, we've got to model that on every other day because I don't know what it is. Tuesdays, yeah, like what is happening between?
It's really interesting. I think some, sometimes I think on the weekends, they wait for our front office to be open. And then they, because lots of calls do come in through our front counter.
Oh, okay.
And it's interesting that it's not Monday.
Yeah.
Everybody just gives it a little day.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday.
But even Saturday is, you know, a little quiet. And then Sunday, it's like, maybe we just call every day Sunday around here and then see, see if it changes.
Yeah. The one interesting chart, I mean, obviously, we don't, we do pretty good in our detachment for our, like, MVCs. I mean, you can see our numbers are low, like two, three, three, two, two, one. What I find interesting is that our high time is that two o'clock in the afternoon. So I'm not sure why that would be. Sometimes you would think those injury and fatal motor vehicle collisions would come in more in impaired drivers, but they don't. It's two in the afternoon. It's just an interesting stat. I wonder if that's when the roads are the busiest in town, I guess, maybe. I don't know. But obviously, you can see our, the traffic safety plan we have in place is doing a pretty good job. If we have, you know, ten to twelve injury MVCs a year, we're doing a good job. The only thing I'll note on that, this chart doesn't do a good job capturing our impaired driving enforcement just because impaired driving has changed enforcement wise in the last four years about, where we now issue provincial sanctions that went away majority from the criminal stuff. We only do criminal if it's repeat offenders or an injury motor vehicle collision. Then we're doing a criminal code impaired driving. Other than that, we do what's called provincial sanctions. And it just isn't captured well on here because of the scoring, it doesn't show up as a criminal code file. So just as a review, I looked there, we did seventy one provincial sanctions last year in the town of Drayton Valley. That doesn't include our rural area. That's just in the town.
What does that mean?
So the province changed, they added provincial sanctions to impaired driving. Same breath testing procedure, other than they, I don't know if you remember, but four, five years ago, they took away where we have to have a reasonable suspicion that there's alcohol. We can now do a mask demand. Every, an officer can walk up to your window at any time and ask you to blow. So our officers can walk up, the first thing they're going to do is just say, provide a sample. So that legislation changed. And then from there, it works, the numbers are the same as what it was before. If you blow a caution, which is, if you blow under fifty, sixty, fifty? Fifty is a caution. So you blow under fifty, you're good to drive. If you're not a GDL driver, GDL drivers are zero tolerant. If you're in between fifty and eighty, which is the legal limit, it's a seventy two hour suspension. And that's considered provincial sanction. We give you a seventy two hour suspension. Your car gets impounded for three days. If you're over eighty, you're going to blow a fail on our roadside screening device. There's another step where you can have a second test, just to confirm it. And then it is a ninety day license suspension. Correct me on your, yeah. I was not on the road when they put this in. Yeah, because we were back in the criminal days. It's a ninety day license suspension automatically. It is a thirty day impound on your car and it is a thousand dollar fine.
But essentially, all the IRS, uh, provincial sanctions, it's not criminal.
It's not a criminal.
It's not time of court system. That's not taking as much time. That's the big difference. Was you're working, you know, we're talking, you make one impaired arrest. I remember just being, okay, you're done with the night, basically, because you're just writing my paperwork and done the rest. And that this is one in court. Now these guys, guys get to two, three a night. If it's the doing a roadside, from their bar, you're issuing an impeded vehicle, and then I'm looking to the next impaired driver. So it's reducing that still all the people accountable and, and it's those offenders, it's hitting them in the licensing.
Yeah.
Their license that they're charged, right?
Yeah.
But it's not giving them a criminal code. The objective shorter suspension.
It is a sh-
Yeah, so some of it. It's depending on.
It depends on the number of offenses. It is a shorter, pardon? Yeah, we should get it. No, no, it's good. Yeah. No, we do have, we should get Justin. Constable DeRosi in town, he is very good at impaired drivers. And he has actually won awards the last two years in a row for the numbers he's got. There's a, if you hit a certain number, you get an award. So he did, he knows it very well. But it is, the first one is ninety days. It, like Dan said, it took it out of the court system and became provincial legislation. And so there is a review process I can go through, but it's not the same and it's immediate. So it's, your license is gone immediately. There's no longer, it used to be like, you get your license back for a bit, then you have your three month. Then you get your one year if you're convicted. It's no longer criminal code conviction. It is an immediate and they're hitting more on the, obviously, it's cost. Vehicle impound for thirty days, highly, huge cost, thousand dollar fine, big cost. That's really what the criminal code conviction was. It was a thousand dollar fine anyways. And then insurance, insurance, if you get an IRS or an impaired is where you're.
Streamlined.
It's much more streamlined. Yeah. And as Dan said, the officers do it all in their car, prints out right in their car. And the person is, just walks away from that traffic zone.
And, and do you still have a criminal record?
Not from an IRS. Nope. There's no criminal charge. It's all provincial.
Oh. Okay. So if, yeah, if you're seeing, okay, you've got three impairments, yeah.
Yeah, and.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
It, it does have a step. So if you do one, like you said, it's ninety days, you get caught twice, there's a higher, higher fine, longer suspension, caught three times and three times a max. After that, it's all criminal.
Okay.
It doesn't give demerits. No. It's a suspension, so there's no demerits. Yeah.
Wow. Mr. Vincent, do you have a question?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Staff Sergeant, can you share with Council what the current staffing complement is? Well, how many vacancies have permanent members, got new sergeants fill that position? How are we doing otherwise?
I can. That was next on my list. You're probably reading my notebook.
You and I work closely together, so.
So, yeah, Dan's here. It's fantastic. We are one hard vacancy right now. That is a constable position for town. One soft vacancy, that's our officer who's having twins in the next couple of weeks. So she'll be gone for a year. And then we have one member that's just accepted a transfer to Manitoba. So he'll go through the process of house sale, but that will put us down two vacancies in the municipal positions. And that we're filled are municipal employees, so our detachment service assistants. We job offered on our new position this week. So I'll have to wait for security clearance to go through with that, but other than that, we have all four, we've job offered on the new one. So, yeah.
So what do we have to do to speed up the process or to ensure that two hard vacancies can be filled as quickly as possible? I know we have a very important meeting coming up next Wednesday. Is that a good opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, I believe Nina's coming out and she's got our CO's ear. So I think as long as the town continues to express that they want those positions filled, I continue to express that with our staffing, but it doesn't hurt to reiterate that, that we want our positions here filled. Yeah.
So as Council knows, my rule number three is I've got your back. Guess what's happening next Wednesday? So there'll be a very strong voice from Mayor and Council in that conversation, I'm sure. Last question that I have from Madam Chair is the police governance regulation. Is that causing you any concern? It is me.
I mean, I don't see it being much different than what we do now. I have made the recommendation to Chief Thompson. I know that we've had meetings about that and about Drayton Valley obviously has a choice to have their own board or go with the provincial board that's been provided to you. I, it would be up to you to know if you've had any say. I've been, I've heard rumors they're already filled. So I, obviously, they probably didn't ask who would be on that board from you guys. And I, so I would guess there's no representation from Drayton Valley on that board. You, you as a community have the choice to create your own. That's been my recommendation to Chief Thompson, is that Drayton Valley creates their own board. I don't see it working much differently than, in the next month, I'm going to approach this council as well with coming up with our priorities for next year, just like I did last year and the year before. And that is what I would then do with the governance board as well. I'd do the same thing.
So Madam Mayor, following today's council meeting, we have our CEO council briefing. And one of the subject matters will be the police governance regulation and recommendation from administration. And I expect there will be a request for a decision at the February twenty sixth regular meeting of council. But we're all over it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I believe there's a deadline for March first.
Yes.
I've got some further news for you on that.
Okay, wonderful. Did you have anything else to share with us?
Nope, that's all I got.
Okay, open it up for additional questions. Counselor McGee?
Good morning, Ryan. Thanks. Two things. Throughout this, I, I see PROS stats, P R O S. I have no clue what that means. Could you just enlighten me there?
That's our database that we use for all our file management. So every time somebody calls police, it creates, generates a file and what we call it is PROS Police Reporting Online System. I think that's what it stands for.
Police Reporting Online System. Okay.
So it's just our database that we use.
Okay. And when I think about mental health and mischief, similar things, right? So then I'm also thinking about repeat offenders. So if, if you looked at all the stats and you, you saw that, you would say, oh, boy, there. But, but really, it could be narrowed down to four or five people that make that line go this, this way, right?
You are one hundred percent correct. Yep. And those, those two, the mischief and the mental health, very much same clients off.
Yeah. Okay. And so we, we're going to try to look at that. The, the thing that I didn't see in all of this was, this, this leads you and directs you. I suspect all of these stats tell you something. I didn't see the executive summary and, and here's where we're going because we have these. I didn't see the executive summary and, uh, and here's where we're going, because we have these stats now.
Yeah, I think, so, I mean, obviously, we set our priorities kinda in this time of year, every year. So this now will come into conversation further with, uh, the council here and saying, okay, this is what last year looked like. What do we wanna focus on? Now, April one is our first, when we set our year priorities. We're, we're pushing April one in six weeks, right? Just crazy. But, um, so our next six weeks is we'll take this data and say, what do we wanna do with this for next year? How do we, how do we use this to determine our priorities for next year? Yeah, we're gonna have those conversations. I have thoughts, but I can have those conversations with, I think there's some better, I think there's some better things we can do maybe with our mischiefs and stuff like that, but we'll, we'll have those conversations and come up with a plan. We hit our new year, April one, and that's when our new, basically, our priorities for the next year will be hit, will be set, so.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Well, wonderful. Well, thank you very much for presenting us. Uh, again, I think that the graphs and all the colors are wonderful. Keep up the great work. It's showing us what's happening. Maybe we might not understand everything, but, uh, great job. Um, and just before you leave, um, I'm hoping you can help me maybe remind our community of what our role as councillors are and what, uh, your role as RCMP are when it comes to our homeless in the community and the crimes that, uh, maybe are being, uh, had. A friend, uh, let me know last night that there's some noise happening on Facebook around, uh, an incident in the community. And I think, um, if you can help remind that if a crime is being committed to maybe not reach out to the mayor to call the RCMP, or if you're at a business, it's up to the business owner or the, um, the manager. Is there anything that you maybe wanna add on, uh, people reporting crimes?
Yeah, one hundred percent. And obviously, if a crime's happening, we wanna be called. It's not to reach out to your councillor. It's, I mean, I would encourage you guys, first question is, have you reported that to police? Cuz what are you supposed to do about that? Obviously, and it hasn't been reported, there's nothing you can do. Also, don't just put it on Facebook. I find, are often, it's just thrown on Facebook as, as a gripe or, uh, complaint. But there hasn't been any, I love the questions on there when people are like, have you reported this? And often, it's not. Right? So we're not, we don't take our dispatch from Facebook, uh, otherwise we'd be going all sorts of directions. So call us. Uh, we need to be called. We can't do anything about crime if we don't know if it's happening. And yeah, when it comes to businesses, it is up to that business if they want that person in that place or not. So if maybe that business owner's okay with that individual sitting in their entryway. I, maybe they're not, but it is up to that business owner then to, uh, ask that person to leave. And if they don't, then they call us, and we'll come, give them the assistance. We have authority to remove them.
Are you, um, finding a little bit more support and, and kind of, I, I know we took a different approach last year of, you know, trying to encourage is, encourage the businesses to not call you or to call us to say, it is your responsibility. Are you seeing success there?
Uh, yes, no, I, yes and no.
Yeah, okay.
We had some success for a time, and I feel like some of it is just, sometimes just easier to call us. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I would say to, you know, um, anyone on Facebook that, um, I don't think Mark Zuckerberg will solve our problems if that's what we're trying to get at. It's easier, I think, to reach out to your, uh, RCMP if there is a crime being committed or talk to the business owner. And I think that, you know, when it comes to the homelessness, if they're not committing crimes, uh, or, you know, they're suffering from mental health or addictions, I think, you know, as a community, it's up to all of us to come together. It's up to all of us to, you know, make our community safe and come up with solutions. Because, um, if we figured out homelessness here in Drayton Valley or, or council has, kudos to us for the world, because that is amazing. So if not, I would encourage everybody to get involved, um, you know, react in a positive way and in the right way, and to support each other, right? Because we're not gonna figure it out alone, so we all have to work together, so. Thank you very much for the work that you do, and we'll try to figure out a way to, uh, you know, alleviate, you know, those transports when you're dealing with the mental health. We'll make sure that we're including that in our study as well as, uh, next year we have a, or next year, next week, we have a visit, um, and we'll have a discussion around those portables, too.
Awesome.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in. Uh, congratulations, and, uh, we'll see you in, uh, in a few days or next week.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you all.
Wonderful. Uh, we will call a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back and jump into our decision items. All right, we will call our meeting back to order at, uh, ten twenty-eight AM before we jump into our decision items. Uh, we do have, uh, some business arising from the delegations. So from the Roots of Resilience Charter School, there was a request for a letter of support. So it sounds like, oh, there is a motion. Oh, perfect. There is a motion there. Okay, um, is, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Okay, Council Clark?
I will make the motion that council direct administration to prepare a letter of support for the Roots of Resilience Charter School for mayor, mayoral signature to be sent to the Alberta government or to, to the Minister of Education.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Clark, um, has made a motion that council direct administration to prepare a letter of support for the Roots of Resilience Charter School for mayoral signature to the Minister of Education. Okay, any question, uh, comment or debate on the motion? Counsel Evans?
Yeah, I just got a question about kind of the nuts and bolts setting up in the CTC. So if they've got.
Can we just vote on the motion, and then I think there'll have to be another motion for that? Cuz I have the same questions as well. Um, okay, so do you have a question on the motion?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
No, just wondering, um, for my information, have we had any discussions with, uh, school boards?
Madam Chair, through the Chair to Council Commander and to all members of council, it would be up to, um, the Roots of Resilience to have contacted the respective school boards. As they had outlined in the presentation, it is, uh, something that's unique to the province of Alberta in terms of the mandate for charter schools. So, uh, there won't be any interference or undermining of the public or the separate school board system. So I think they're well within their jurisdiction in terms of what they're doing. And it would be incumbent by sharing the information with us today, if it hasn't been previously shared with the community, and people are aware of it, and if there's questions that they have, they should be approaching, uh, Mrs. Bearhead or, uh, Miss Snow in that particular matter.
Yeah, no, I, I, sorry, I totally understand that, but it would have been, uh, nice for, easier for us for the decision if we had got, got some feedback, uh, from the school boards. But I understand that we don't have time for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Uh, are you suggesting that they be CC'd on the letter?
We, we could, but no, uh, I, I'm just wondering, you know, with the school boards, uh, you know, what's their take?
Oh, okay.
And it would help us, help me to, um, take the decision on, on this support.
On a letter, support letter?
Exactly. But that's, that's fine.
Okay.
We don't have time for that.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, um, to prepare a letter of support for the Roots of Resilience. If there's no further comment, question, or debate, then I'll call the motion all in favor. And that is carried. Um, and then are we needing a motion now? Because there was a second ask, uh, in regards to, um, the school being at the CETC. I know that those conversations have happened, but, um, what kind of is happening there?
Madam, Madam Mayor, members of council, I think it'd be premature because they are still looking for approval from the minister to establish charter school. And I think, I think then the next step is to then negotiate with the town for space. We know we have space. The facility is underutilized, and it meets some of council's priorities and objective of making that a more vibrant center and, uh, uh, increasing the amount of revenue that we receive from that facility. So I would respectfully suggest that we wait to see what the outcome is. And if they get their charter, then we would, uh, proceed with negotiations and bring a contract or an agreement back to council for approval.
Thank you for that.
And as, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just add, and as indicated, they're prepared to pay the full cost. They're not looking for any reductions or anything else, which from, uh, my perspective is very good news, that we'll be able to achieve some of our revenue projections and probably exceed those if we're in a position to enter into such an agreement.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Evans, did you have additional questions?
Thank you. So if they're offering K to grade twelve, and they have sixty-some students right now, so their classes, I'm assuming, will be mixed ages?
I don't know. Does it say in here?
I, I didn't see anything in the, in the presentation. I, I, and again, I'm just curious about the, the nuts and bolts of how they're, they're gonna, li- like, I think we have a, a few, uh, spaces available on the CETC, maybe up to, I, I, I don't know. I'm gonna say six for, just for conversation, but I don't think we have twelve different classrooms available in the end. That's all I'm getting at.
I don't even think we would have six.
Yeah, so, a- and if they're gonna offer K to twelve, again, I'm just making the assumption and asking, it would the, I'm assuming the, the classrooms would be of mixed ages. They would, they would group.
Split classrooms or something.
Madam, uh, Mayor, through the Chair to Counselor Evans and to all members of council, we don't have that particular information, but I'd be pleased to get that in spite of council. Knowing the Mother Earth School operations, when I was CEO for Parkland County, they only had about six, uh, classrooms total. So though they offer the entire gamut from K to twelve, I don't expect that they will have full classes in each of that. So I'm not anticipating that they're gonna need twelve classroom spaces off the start. You know, probably, uh, be looking at a smaller number to start. And over time, they may require additional space. But, uh, in speaking with our, uh, general manager of planning and growth, uh, what they had projected in the meetings that she had with them, that we had sufficient space to accommodate them initially. I will get the additional information for, for council.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it would have been nice to have a few more questions there, but we ran out of time, so, okay.
Counselor Clark, did you have, uh, additional? You're okay? Um, yeah, so I think, um, there's a motion been made to, for a letter of support, and I think that, uh, Charlene had mentioned they have ninety days for approval. So I think, um, if approval, uh, if they're successful with the approval, then we'll be having some sort of other report or proposal come back that would answer hopefully some more of these questions. And that would be through Charlene and our administrative team as well, what that exactly would look like. Okay, perfect. Um, so there, there's no other business, uh, arising from this. We've made a motion. Yeah, and then, so for our RCMP, um, the Drayton Valley Municipal Detachment Report this morning, is there a member of council that would like to make, uh, a motion? Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that council accept the Drayton Valley Municipal Calls for Service Report as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried, and we'll jump into our decision items. Uh, we only have one decision item this morning, nine point one, which is, uh, the March Governance and Priorities Committing Meeting Date. This is Mr. Pat Vincent.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for that formal introduction. Take me off guard here. Council, members of council will be attending the Rural Municipalities Association Spring Conference from March seventeenth to nineteenth. March nineteenth is a Wednesday, and it's a normal day for our Governance and Priorities Committee meeting. Because of the conflict and the, uh, lack of, uh, quorum on that particular date, administration is respectfully suggesting that the March nineteenth Governance and Priorities Committee meeting be rescheduled to Thursday, March twentieth. As a result, we are pleased to submit the recommendation that council approve the change of the date for the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, Governance and Priorities Committee to Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. We trust this speech with your approval.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, any questions for administration? Does that date work, Counselor Evans?
Yeah, I'll have a library board meeting after lunch that day, so, uh, you know, I don't wanna hold everybody up. I can just leave after, after one o'clock to go to the library board meeting, if that works.
Will we have quorum on the twentieth? Over here. Um, so we will have quorum. Um, I, do we have an economic development plan for that day? I guess we won't know until the agenda.
No, there won't be the Economic Development Committee on that day.
May be done. Yeah, might work. Okay. Do we need a motion? We do need a.
With resolution under the MGA, if, uh, once council establishes their dates at the organizational meeting, if there's any change in those dates, we must pass that by resolution, so that's the submission.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Clark, will you make the motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that council change the date for the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five Governance and Priorities Meeting to March twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll ask all in favor. That is carried, and if you could just, uh, send us out a revised calendar invite, please, for that date. Uh, so that is it. Wow, one decision item today. That is crazy. Uh, we'll jump into our council reports. First up is Counselor Gomana.
Thank you. Put me off guard as well. Thank you. Uh, on the twenty-ninth, uh, you know, we all had the opportunity to attend the emergency management meeting after our council, uh, meeting. And, uh, from there, on the thirtieth, uh, had the opportunity to attend a shelter pods meeting, uh, with the Human Helping Humans. They are having some, uh, technical difficulties, uh, with the, uh, locks and, uh, the cooling system. But other than that, uh, everything else seems to be working well. Uh, there hasn't been any difficulties, uh, beyond that with, with the guests that, that using the shelter pods. On the fourth, uh, got the opportunity with, uh, a couple of other council members to go to the BCG shipment to Jasper. They were shipping out a huge, uh, shipment, uh, to Jas- municipality of Jasper. And that's fantastic to see that, uh, BCG, uh, is growing and, uh, um, going to an extent that, that they are, uh, maybe ready to expand, uh, and hire more people as well. On the fifth, uh, we had our, uh, annual strategic planning session. More of, uh, uh, trying to figure out what are we gonna do for the next, uh, eight to nine months that we've left here. I think it was a, it was a good, uh, session that we had, and tried to narrow it down what we can achieve, um, we, within the, the timeframe that we have. Of course, uh, you know, I felt that we, we need more in-depth, uh, discussions after that, because we talked about high level. We need to hopefully, uh, go beyond that and then have a, have a more robust discussion. That's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Evans?
Yes, uh, also, uh, attended a, or emergency management, uh, meeting, uh, on the twenty-ninth. On the fifth of February, the strategic planning session, as Counselor Gomana has covered. And, uh, on the seventh, uh, I attended a, a meeting to, uh, consider a waste energy, um, proposal, I guess, from, uh, from a company, which was, uh, interesting, um, and we'll be pursuing it further, I think, just to gather more information before, uh, probably bring it to the Sustainability Committee, and, uh, if, uh, if they think it's worth pursuing, then we'll, uh, we'll throw it in front of council for consideration, I think. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Deputy Mayor Sheriffs.
So on February fourth.
So on February fourth, attended the bio, composted bio mile where they were sending the rolls to Jasper. And when, when I first heard them say that, you know, they're big roles for the fire suppression and, and growth of the new pants, I wasn't expecting them to be so thin, yet they cover such a huge amount of space, and that was really impressive. On February fifth, the Strategic Planning Workshop. On the seventh, went to the RMRF, and the sessions that I attended, one of them was the tax incentives for affordable housing, all the regulations and laws, and how that works with the Housing Authority, and there's, the government is trying to work on making it easier for the municipality to be able to give some kind of tax incentives and breaks for developers to be able to come into community and start building. Also, say, sale of municipal land and regulations, contracts, conditions, what you can and can't do. That was really interesting. There was a little bit of homelessness as a pressing issue for municipalities, and what roles does municipality versus the province versus the federal government? What can do, who can do what? On the February tenth, I had a meeting with West Central Airshed Society, and we looked at the CTC building, which they're planning on renting out for the May twenty-eighth, thirtieth anniversary celebration. So there, there will be some asks from council, from the community, and that's about it.
Thank you very much. Counselor McGee?
February, I was able to be part of the 4H judging or their communication?
Oh, your mic?
I'm sorry, the 4H judging on Sunday, the February ninth. It was the, the Two Rivers Club, and I, I think those are really good things for us to be part of, even though it's rural and urban and that basis, but, but to watch the kids and then their junior and then their senior and to come out and speak about something that they're somewhat passionate about and then make a judgment, call that was the most difficult thing. There were three judges on that and three judges on the, on the presentation group where they presented, say, what they were wanting to present. So anyway, it was, it was a great few hours that I spent with them and really enjoyed it. And I want to say thank you to Sadie McCracken for inviting me to be part of that. I was at the strategy session like others. I also met with Jeff McKay from Warehouser, and that's just on a role to keep our communication going with, with Jeff and, and Warehouser, and as well as the pathway system that we're gonna speak further on. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Clark?
A couple of items. One, a couple of meetings with the Youth Advisory Committee. Attended my first meeting with them. Had to miss the first one, but good group of people, lots of ideas, lots of energy. You know, they have lots of plans. One of the things that I had brought to them yesterday was our strategic planning session, and they are building a bit of a survey. And what I'd like to do is send that to them, to help them, you know, help inform them and their surveys. So that'll help build out those questions that they're proposing to the community. Yeah, good group of kids. And the other thing I just wanted to bring, Minister Jones, Minister of Families, Children, or sorry, Minister of Labor and a whole bunch of other things, sent a letter to the federal government regarding childcare and the funding around that, and his dissatisfaction, I guess, with their participation there. So effectively, his, his synopsis of it all is ultimately, if sufficient funding and the required flexibility are not provided, Alberta's government will be unable to proceed with the renewal and will be forced to transition out of what is and what will be an unsustainable program. So that's regarding the fifteen-dollar day and ten-dollar-a-day program. So kind of creates some uncertainty for us here with respect to the ECDC, as well as some families around here. So, so I don't know if it's worth council requesting any sort of audience with him to give him our perspective. I don't know, but anyway, I thought I'd bring that to the table, because that is a little bit concerning, I guess, for, for our organization and facility there, so. That's all I have.
That's it. Thank you very much. I did add that under our roundtable discussion. We'll chat about it a little bit more. For myself, I attended the Emergency Management Meeting. I was online that day. Nice to see that we're continuing our training and educating and improvements when it comes to our wildfire and fire smarting and safety in our community. Monica, Counselor Sheriffs, and myself have been working on Women in Business preparing that we have coming up for, I guess we have two dates coming up. March first, we'll be through the chamber. We're doing a, a leadership and for women in business, I think, and then we have another one coming up on March eighth for National Women's Day. So there'll be two events there. I did a couple of interviews, one with CBC Daybreak. I got to do a little walkabout of our downtown. It was beautiful and snowing that day, a little bit chilly, and just talk about the businesses and restaurants and, excuse me, our downtown core. So it was, it was an interesting and kind of an exciting way to highlight our community again. I also did another interview with Cross Borders Network as well, just kind of highlighting what we're doing and what's happening in Drayton Valley and the role of an elected official, and where is my zen spot that I like to go and hide? And now that I realize that I said that and it's gonna be aired, everyone will be able to find me there. Quite funny. I had a couple mid-sized mayor's town meetings, one with Minister MacGyver. I did join council and Dan and Brenda for the BCG shipment that went to Jasper. Like so many Albertans, we were heartbroken and devastated with the wildfires last year. I know that Jasper holds a little special place in my heart and many of us. It's like a second home. So to be part of that, you know, is special and to support BCG and, and their efforts to rebuild and recover from that are also, you know, part of the process and, and just glad and want to be helping in any way that we can. We also planned or did a strategic alignment day, just kind of relooking at our priorities, where we are, where we want to end this year, and what are our kind of top two or three things that we'd like to check off our list for twenty twenty-five. And then I attended the RMRF legal session in Edmonton as well. I think there's been a few legislative changes. So as counselors and administration, it's always important to be on top of those changes and know what's happening at the provincial and municipal and all levels of government. And that is it for me for my report as well. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept the council reports as information? Counselor McGee? Thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. And now we'll move into council items, roundtable discussions. We have on here strategic priorities. I had put this on here because there'll be a few counselors away in the coming weeks. We did do some strategic planning or aligning last week, so I would encourage anybody if they do have any comments or questions. I know that that document isn't quite prepared, that we will have it next Wednesday at our Governance and Priorities Meeting. So if there was any comments or questions or anything that you'd want to add to that, I know, Counselor Gomana, you had addressed that a little bit in your report, so I'm not sure if you want to kick things off here?
Sure, I'll try. I, I think, like I said, the session was great. The individual who hosted it, I think, you know, for the last eight years, probably one of the best sessions that we had. You know, all of that, and I think we, we had a very good, very robust discussion. But then the, I guess, just wanted to talk about the next step, right? So now we have the priorities set, high level. We need to, when, once we get the, the document, figure out what goes with each segment or each pillar, if you want to call that. I think that will be an interesting discussion as well, to figure out, you know, how do we achieve those goals? Of course, some may be short-term, but more would be more long-term for, set the stage for the next council to be successful. So that's where my headspace is. You know, without seeing the document, understanding what's being captured and what's not, it's hard to have that discussion now, I think. But, you know, if we want to open that up, maybe, maybe in a GATP session or something, we should, we should have that discussion, just by two cents.
Okay. Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to Council Gomana and all members of council, I can assure you, you will get, be getting your teeth into this document next Wednesday at Governance and Priorities Committee Meeting, and I'll have a few more insights to share during the CEO briefing with council immediately following council meeting. So outline timeframes and hopefully meet all of council's expectations. But I'm very excited about what I've seen. Needs a little bit of work on the document and polish, but we're getting there very quickly.
Perfect. Thank you. You will be away, Tom. Do you have any questions, concerns, or comments about the session or about, you won't be here for next week, that you'd like to see included? Or you think we missed the mark, or we missed something, or you want to see a priority put on there?
Interesting question. Do you think we missed the mark? You heard from me at the end of the session, and I, I think, I'll leave it at that. And the presenter, Ian McCormick, was, was top-notch in, in his business, no question about that. And we may have, as Mr. Vincent has suggested, further discussion. That'll allow me to maybe make some remarks in our session following this meeting. Thanks.
Okay, wonderful.
And Madam Mayor, just wanted to comment. Next Wednesday is only the start of the conversation. It's not the end of the conversation, and certainly you need to have all members of council sitting at the table, you know, for that final discussion and moving things forward. So be critical and recognizing Counselor McGee will be away for a couple of weeks. That, that'll be delayed until his return, but we'll get a good start on it and fill it out and finalize it by the expectation that I had by the end of quarter one, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So out of the, the outcome, one of the outcomes that, or the major outcome that happened at our strategic kind of planning was to set the direction for the next eight months. We only have eight months left in this council term. So one of the things I think that unanimously around the table for administration and council was, we want it to clear direction. We want it to determine a clear plan for the next eight months and to kind of downsize all of those things that were previously on our priorities down to a few things that we feel that we can accomplish over the next eight months, and if they're not accomplished, then we're setting the next council up for success and be able to transition and, and, you know, continue those priorities and initiatives moving forward. I know that we have an election coming up in October, and when new counselors come on board, you kind of come in like a deer in the headlights, and you've got budget, and you've got committees, and you have a lot happening. So it's nice if someone can kind of have a little bit of that path set, and then maybe in twenty twenty-six, you will do your own strategic planning and, and just check what the priorities of the previous and council were in the community, and then decide from there. So we'll have further discussion next week about this at our Governance and Priorities Meeting. Counselor Clark, did you want to talk a little bit again about ECDC, and if there's something that, maybe an action coming out of that?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I just wanted to get that in front of council and let everybody know what he's indicating, and I guess the potential impacts to the community and the ECDC itself. So, you know, I, I think it might be worth trying to reach out, seeing if we can get an audience with him, and if not, we tried, right?
So could you maybe tell me a little bit more about, I did see the letter, so I guess the, what we were trying for is we were, we were aiming for ten dollars a day, and, and we landed on fifteen dollars a day? Were we not supposed to reach the ten dollars a day by twenty twenty-six, or are we not on track? Like, I'm, I'm not quite understanding.
Yeah, I think it's all on track. However, it seems as though the minister, let's just call it, has reached an impasse with his federal counterpart, just in terms of the flexibility of the programs and what they'd like to see provincially, because they want it extended to also private facilities.
So we do, or the province?
The province does. And the federal government is not offering that. So he's suggesting, you know, in his notes that it's, you know, they're not acting in good faith and not showing any sort of flexibility in their, in their approach to early childcare. And so he's saying, well, you know, unless you guys are willing to become more flexible, we're just gonna wait till the next government forms and we'll, we'll negotiate with them.
Interesting. Counselor Gomana?
And, and that could go the other way, too.
Yeah.
A question to Counselor Clark, if this has been discussed. I, I've seen some concerns regarding removal of some of the previous subsidies that, that may, may have or would have got some of the kids' fees even lower than fifteen, you know, could be even lower than ten dollars a day. I think that's, has that been discussed, or is there any, any advocacy piece we can?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really, we haven't had a meeting recently enough to discuss that, because I think that's within the last couple of weeks. That's sort of come to, come to late. But yeah, I mean, I would suggest, I mean, it's been known all along that it's on average, right? It doesn't mean you are paying fifteen. It could be eight, it could be twenty-two. Just depends upon where you fit on the, you know, the spectrum of what you make in a year. So yeah, I guess we, I don't know enough yet to comment on that.
So on average, will the parents that have their kids enrolled at ECDC see an increase or a decrease in their fees?
So as a result of the fifteen-dollar day?
As a result.
I don't know. I've, I've seen some stuff suggesting that, but again, I haven't had a chance to talk with Bernus and, and those folks about it, to understand it, whether or not that's true. Because that is coming from some nonprofits in town that are saying that, but they may not have their facts straight. So I'd like to understand it first before seeing one way or another.
So is it fair to say maybe we'll wait for you to hear back or have those discussions with Bernus, and then if we're all in favor, then we can decide if we want to send a letter or what that letter kind of looks like, or what we're advocating for?
Yep. I think that makes sense.
Yeah? Anybody else comment? Questions? Mr. Vincent, did you have a question? No? Okay. So yeah, yeah, just kind of keep us informed, because it is interesting. I read the letter and I wasn't sure what I was reading. So I was like, is this good? Is this bad? I don't quite know.
Yeah, could be bad, could be good. Don't, don't know. And yeah, again, it totally depends upon the next government that forms. It may be a different government. So, and I, I think they've expressed the desire to not do this sort of stuff, so.
But isn't an election two years away?
No, federal election is at the latest October, but probably April, May this year.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, right. Okay, so we'll wait to hear a little bit more from there, and we'll be prepared if we need to be sending a letter and advocating for that. Okay. I just wanted to bring two letters to your attention. The first one is, I know that we had made a motion and had a discussion about sending a few letters to ministers last year. One was to Minister LaGrange. I still haven't gotten to sending that letter. I did recraft it again on the weekend, and I think the reason why is, we seem to be changing always what our ask is and what we're doing with healthcare. And so I was rereading the letter that we had sent to the premier, and it didn't quite align with the letter that we were sending. So I was going to send it out to council with the premier's letter and just to have a look at, to say, okay, what is our ask here? Because I think we need to be clear, because it, it has changed a little bit. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up before I do, but it is on my list to send, but we do have some changes there. The second letter just came in this week, and you will see it probably on the next agenda for council, but I did want to bring it to your attention now. It is from Transportation and Economic Corridors, and it is in regards to the grants that we were denied from transportation. The letter is referring to Premier Smith forwarding our concerns regarding our unsuccessful submission for- for provincial, uh, infrastructure grants. It goes on to talk about how the grants, uh, continue to be oversubscribed with increasing demand for funding each year, which we know. Uh, I did speak with Ms. Terry and we have resubmitted, um, our application. Uh, and so, um, there is a deadline that we'll hear from this. So I think it's important that, um, you know, we push our MLA on this to say, you know, you need to be speaking for us on, on this. And as well as we have Spring Leaders Caucus coming up. So, um, I think the majority of us are attending Spring Leaders Caucus. So with the letters that have gone out, we'll have a, a letter to LaGrange, uh, Sahani and, um, Schultz. Um, we do have a meeting, Pat and I, this afternoon about that. Um, and then now we'll have transportation. So I think I had asked Shelley to send us some kind of calls notes about the exact grant, what the submission was. So whenever we see those ministers, we can collectively or individually be targeting them and speaking the same kind of language and trying to secure this because, uh, we're going to phase three of that project, uh, you know, our transport, or our, uh, infrastructure project as well as the need for, uh, water treatment plants. So, uh, does, I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments on that? I'm looking at you because you look like you got something to say, Council Evans?
I just, she said, well, water treatment plant, are we referring to that or the wastewater?
I'm not sure, um, how many we have, how many submissions we have in right now. I think we reapplied for the fiftieth, um, as well as the water treatments. I wasn't sure which grant.
Wastewater.
The wastewater?
Yeah, it's wastewater treatment system upgrades that we're, that we're looking at. I just wanted to clarify.
And which one was that on our, is that the fifteen million?
Um, I, I, I don't know the final number, but it's the Sagar system that we just had a, had a pilot project for, I believe. If I'm not mistaken. So we want to go ahead and, uh, go ahead with that, uh, if we can get the funding. So that's part of our whole lagoon system. It's at the end of our lagoon system. It goes through that Sagar system for final polishing. And I think they, I, I, I think they were successful with the, with the, the pilot project, if I'm not mistaken. And now that grant that we're looking for is to implement a full, full build out. So I, and, and again, it wasn't that big a deal. I just, I knew it wasn't water. I knew it was wastewater. That's all.
Well, just make sure everybody, we have Rick beside us when we see the minister. So he can be the one that speaks to you. What, what exactly is on it? Uh, Council Clark?
Isn't there an interconnect too? Like the, uh, to tie the, that one in? Because that's, that's there as well. Tie the, um, water treatment plant into the system.
Yeah, the distribution system, that main line coming to the middle of town here.
Yeah.
And then ultimately the other side.
That's the fifteen million dollar one. Okay. Yeah, just, um, I did give Shelley a heads up, but maybe if we could give her a heads up on all of the grants, um, that we have going in, uh, Mr. Vincent, to transportation. And I think it's good to maybe for all of our departments, any grants that we have, um, that when we're there, that we can make sure that we're speaking to, right? I know our MLA is busy and, uh, doesn't always get, uh, the message sent to us or to the province for us. So, um, is there anything else for council roundtable discussions?
I want to give a, Madam Mayor, a quick shout out to, um, our, uh, our sidewalk clearing. Uh, the brooms are back. And so we've been without brooms and they've been using, uh, the, the other Ventrex. So we've now got, uh, the brooms back and the PTO systems, uh, in place. So they're sweeping the rinks with the brooms. They're sweeping the sidewalks with the brooms and, um, they're, it's, 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 it's much better.
Where was our brooms?
I don't know, but they're back. And yeah, and so a shout out to those, uh, to, to that group. And, um, the other thing I would raise though is that, uh, we have a bylaw about sidewalk. And I know it's been winter and I know it's been snowing and I know it's been icy and I know all of those things. But my guess is, is we've never really ever done anything about the bylaw and sidewalk clearing. And, um, this morning on my walk, the, um, it seems like our broom went right past the old, old hotel and I thought that was great. And I looked up the street, no, I didn't did that. I know about that one. And front of the White, White Bull or, and there's a, there's a big tall building right downtown. It's a government building or whoever owns it, but that, that sidewalk has never been done. Sidewalk around the corner of a mattress shop that might be there, might not be there, never been done. But we don't really actually do anything about that. And I think I'm kind of okay with it, other than we should be paying some attention or at least, and I know that they're busy with other things. Uh, I just think, um, we either have it or we don't. And I, I don't have an, another opinion than that.
Any other comments or go ahead, Council Evans?
Okay. Uh, sure. Uh, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I, I'll go with what, uh, Council Maggie mentioned, you know, passing kudos. Uh, another, um, thank you from DVHDA. I think, uh, our team worked with them for that, uh, this is Drayton Valley. I guess, uh, video shoot that they had a couple of days ago, especially in a short notice. Town was able to, um, clear the outdoors skating rink and they were very appreciative of that. So please pass along that kudos to the team. Thank you.
Council Evans?
Yes, Councilor McGee mentioned, we do have a bylaw that requires people to clean the sidewalks connected to or surrounding their, their lands. I would have liked to see us this year get that information out to all the businesses in town early. I don't think we, we did that. We're kind of, I think winter arrived and then we said, well, you know, the bylaw is in place. We discussed it the year before this. Said we're gonna, we're gonna stick with the bylaw. I don't think we, we made it exactly clear to all the businesses that this is your responsibility. And I don't think we've enforced it, but I may be wrong. I don't know. Are we, are we talking to people or are we writing tickets when they're not, uh, cleaning their sidewalks, Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to Council Evans and to all members of council, if you recall, in November, when, uh, Mr. Bergen came into this chambers, made his presentations, we made very clear that what the expectations were, it was put onto our website and through social media. So I think we did, uh, a pretty aggressive communications campaign. We didn't send out letters individually or visit each business to remind them of their responsibilities. And we are doing enforcement. We're doing it through an educational approach by issuing notices to people when they are derelict in fulfilling their responsibility and clearing the snow. And sort of three strikes, it give you one chance, give you a third chance or a second chance, third time, we're going to be issuing by a violation ticket. So I know our CPOs have been monitoring that very closely. They've been following, uh, working closely with, uh, operations. And, uh, I think we're, you know, there always be some properties. There's that five percent factor that you have to go after. And staff have been instructed, if the property owner does not clean their, uh, sidewalks as per the bylaw, the town will come in and do that and charge the costs to their property taxes if they don't pay. So we're becoming a little more rigid in terms of that and becoming more aggressive in terms of the enforcement. But we like to work with people, the residents of communities, you know, we want to maintain a good relationship. But there is a tipping point and that tipping point will be the third time.
And I, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. I, I don't think we need to, to, to go in, uh, and, and strong arm these businesses by any means. Uh, just remind them of their responsibility. And I also agree with, uh, us stepping in and, and doing it, uh, if it doesn't get done. But I, I have to admit, when I drive around town, I see a lot of, a lot of sidewalks that are not being touched. So I hope we, we continue on with our, with our plan there and, uh, start seeing some results. I, I know we have pushback from some businesses, but i- in the end, I think as a council, we decided that the, the, the bylaw, bylaw was fair and equitable and we wanted to run with that. I guess the only suggestion I would make is that next year, we, we get that information out even earlier. You know, September, October, um, you know, um, kind of not after the first snowfall. And then we got to address it. That, that would be the only, my only suggestion there. I agree with all the other things that we're, we're doing.
Madam Mayor, we'll ensure the first snowfall in August will send out, uh, notices.
Thank you for that. Um, do we have any other roundtable discussion items? No? Okay. Um, we have one information item, Brazos Foundation, uh, meeting minutes. Is there a member of council like to accept these as information, please? Council McGee, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried and that adjourns our, uh, meeting for February twelfth at eleven fourteen AM, record time, I think.